Thank you and good evening. This is a special meeting of the Morro Bay City Council. It is Wednesday, November 6, 2019. It's 5:30 PM. We're at the Veterans Hall, 209 Serv Street, Morro Bay, California. Welcome to all those that are here this evening. We do have a quorum of council members present, so I will call the meeting to order and lead in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is a special meeting. Our calendar is full, and we have two weeks off, one in November and one in December, for the holiday, and this meeting was scheduled especially to cover three items. The format for special meetings is just a little bit different. We take all of the public comment up front. So I'm going to open up comment for items on the agenda. You have the usual three minutes. If you've filled out a speaker slip, I'll go there first and then open it up to anybody else that may want to speak on any item. You can speak on item number one, two, or number three. And so with that, welcome. Good evening. And I will start with public comment. First up tonight is Patricia Newton. Welcome, Patricia.
Hi, good evening. Mr. Mayor, City Council, city staff, thank you. I'm here with regard to our grant application, of course, Art Center Morro Bay. We've not ever submitted a grant application for anything like this, or I don't think anything for the city, period. This time, when I heard about this particular grant process, I thought this might really behoove not just Art Center Morro Bay, but for the whole community at large. We think about our kids in our area. They are our future, and the kids mean a lot to us here in Morro Bay at the Art Association. So the last few years, we have had a great summer art program. The schools here, they try their best, but they just don't have the money, as a lot of people know. Our demographics here prevent a lot of people from being able to afford a lot of fun things like that. So not just gives the kids something to do, but it gives them something that will help them along the way as they grow and learn. So we offer this program at a reduced fee. Then we hire professional local art teachers that work here in the local schools. This year, we're looking to hire an extra teacher because we had enough kids that we actually need the extra help. So I'm hoping that you will consider our application. I know there are several agencies here that are very well deserving as well, but while you are considering, please consider Morro Bay Art Association and Art Center Morro Bay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Patricia. Next up for public comment is Joe Whitaker. Welcome, Joe.
Good evening. Joe Whitaker, board member, Diversity Coalition, San Luis Obispo County. As this is my first appearance before your council, I am leaving copies of our current brochure detailing the coalition's purpose, history, programs, efforts, plus our current roster of financial sponsors. Formed in 2011 as the Five Cities Diversity Coalition, our primary educational effort for the past three years, our Community Diversity Education and Training Program has served the Lucium Arso School District. Over 2,000 middle and high school students have already participated in its transformative experience. Last January, we formally renamed ourselves and expanded this program into the San Luis Coastal School District. We have already appeared three times at Morro Bay High before a total audience of over 500 students. The Coalition funds visits by nationally known authors, playwrights, and speakers whose appearances serve as cornerstones for teacher-planned diversity study projects for their students. Last spring, Paul and Marion Wolf, local Holocaust survivors, spoke to Morro Bay High's American and World History students about their childhoods under Nazi tyranny. And last month, Fan Shan Cox performed for the senior class her acclaimed play, One Drop of Love, her journey as a mixed-race woman in America. The Coalition also hosts quarterly community outreach meetings, open to the public, featuring interesting keynote speakers with provocative subjects. Councilwoman Addis is one of our esteemed former speakers. While our audiences are always receptive and very enthusiastic, she is still our only guest speaker, receiving a standing ovation. Way to go. The Coalition also looks forward to working with Morro Bay city leaders and exploring ways we can interact with an even greater part of your city's population. Therefore, I respectfully ask the city of Morro Bay to become a financial sponsor of the Coalition. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate that. For those of you, a number of you have come in, it's a special meeting tonight, so we're taking public comment up front. No need to wait for the item. If you want to fill out a speakership slip, that's fine. No need to do that. I will take the slips first, but this is public comment only for items on the agenda tonight because it is a special meeting. So with that, next up is Rhonda Crowe. And is it?
Crowfoot.
Crowfoot, I thought. I couldn't read the writing, but thank you. Welcome, Rhonda.
Thank you. My name is Rhonda Crowfoot. I am the president of the board for By the City Productions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, and staff for hearing this. We are asking for a grant to help with our summer program, our summer show this year. This year, our summer program is Murder on the Orient Express, which sounds like a program that may have been done more than once, but it is a very new script. And if we could have help with By the City to stage this performance, it would be one of the first performances of this specific play in the area. We are live theater here in Morro Bay. We have been around for about three years in our current place, and putting on productions is kind of expensive. We have to pay royalties and make sets and things. So what we are asking is that the city of Morro Bay sponsor our summer program. You'd get, I brought out little packets, and we have a little program from a previous summer program called Veronica's Position, and picture presented by the city of Morro Bay on top of the program, which is what we would do. You'd be included, the city would be included in all of our advertising and all of our promotions for that show. We have done, we are becoming more and more popular. We have had sold-out performances on all of our shows, and each year, our shows become more and more popular. We have done occasional audience surveys. Those surveys show that between 10% and 25% of any given audience is also from out of town. We have a lot of people in town who come to these cultural events, and then a lot of people from out of town. One of the reasons is, is we have these small little programs that we take to all the hotels, and the hotels allow us to display them and show. And again, the city would be included on all of that advertising. So thank you very much for listening. I do hope that you consider us for some of this money, and we very much appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda, for being here. Next up for public comment is Tim. Is it Waggy?
Wog.
Wog, sorry, Tim. It looked like an S on the end.
You're good.
Welcome, Tim.
Thanks, guys. If I recall correctly, I was here last year about the same time to be requesting grant money from Morro Bay for Home Share Slow, a nonprofit for which I was a founding board member in 2016 and am very proud to be affiliated with. We have done very well in Morro Bay, and actually, our staff loaded me up with a bunch of statistics that I'm going to skip. So that's good, because we have great statistics for Morro Bay, and those are the ones that I'm going to focus on. This year, just 2019, we helped 13 Morro Bay residents find an appropriate housemate for housing so that they could afford to live in a home share. What we do is we take someone who has a residence with empty bedrooms, and we match them to someone who's looking to rent a room. And no, it's not Craigslist, okay? We often think that if some senior puts their name on Craigslist, it's a come-and-rob-me invitation. What we do, we do criminal background checks, we do home safety inspections, we do credit checks, we check everything. We make what we call the provider, who provides the room, and the seeker, who's looking to rent the room. They get to interview each other and find a good match, and we've been very successful in Morro Bay. We held 10 outreach events this year in Morro Bay, at the end of Morro Bay. That's how we find people for providers and seekers, and we invite them to a coffee discussion, and that's been very effective. So we are very happy to be asking Morro Bay. You have supported us since 2016 with $11,000 in grants, which we have turned that into $120,000 in benefits to the providers and seekers at Morro Bay that have rented a room or received rent at under-market rates. And again, there is a housing crisis. I think everybody knows that. It's getting worse, not better. Things like Home Share Slow create housing where none existed, and we're asking for $5,000 in support. And I was asked to request it from the Affordable Housing Fund, so I hope that is the correct place, and if it's not, pretend I didn't say that. Okay, that's it. Thank you so much for your support, guys. You have leveraged it into real housing for a bunch of people and made a real difference. So thank you very much.
Great. Thanks, Tim. Appreciate that. Next up for public comment is Brad Spar. If I got that right. Welcome, Brad.
I'm here to represent SCORE and also to request your financial support and that you would continue to award us the grants as you have in the past. The mission of SCORE is to help small business, small business owners to develop vibrant businesses that grow and are financially successful. We also work with people who want to start businesses, to help them get a business plan together, to make sure that their ideas work and have a good chance of success. We charge no money, and we will stay with a business owner for as long as they want. We like to say that we'll be with you when you write your first business plan, and we'll be with you 10 years later when you sell your business for way too much money. So as I said, all of us are volunteers. We do this because we like it. We do this because we love the great game of business, and we do it because we love to work with people and to help business in this area. Over the past about year and a half, I think, Erica, we have formed an excellent partnership with the Chamber here, working with Erica Crawford and her staff. We've put on five workshops, attended by dozens of people in person, and also viewed by hundreds, if not more, on the council website. So it's a vibrant program. It helps business in this area. We have great repeat customers, great feedback, and we hope that we can continue it with your assistance. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Brad, for being here. Next up for public comment is Richard Sadowski. Hi, Richard. Welcome.
I'm here from Homefronts. Equilogistic represents Homefronts fiscal sponsor, and we are applying for a grant for basically an air monitoring program with an emphasis on carbon dioxide. And with the support of the Northern Schumash Tribal Council, we submitted for this community grant. And then we got support from the community development department and the city, from the city and then the harbor department for the larger CARB grant that we are applying for, that this is an integral part. And I got five copies of the support letters here, and I got a copy of the CARB grant. Now, the CARB grant is the Air Resources Control Board's Community Grant Program, and we were recommended to apply for that through the Environmental Protection Agency in California's Environmental Justice Area Department. So we are hopeful that at the end of this month, we will receive this grant, and so we're asking for basically a handheld air meter that will be able to be used, and we have a route set up that's in the grant. And unfortunately, one of the things that was missing from the packet, but it got put in, I'm sure, is what the money's for, and it's for that handheld meter. It's a piece of fine equipment. Anyway, hopefully, we would be able to get this grant, and then with the support from the state, have an air monitoring program that we could lace into the climate action plan and integrate into the county. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Rich. Appreciate that. And next up for public comment is Mike Mancheck. Mike, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Heading, members of the council. Mike Mancheck with the Economic Vitality Corporation. First, I want to just thank you for the city's past support. We have a grant application in for $5,000. It is the 25th year of the EVC. We're grateful for Councilmember Addis for serving on that board that we have. It represents the entire county, really provides business resources to help grow, start, and expand business. I think opportunity is timely for Morro Bay to help attract more business, and in working with the Chamber and working with your city staff, Scott as well, your city manager, I think there's a lot of opportunity. We just need to coordinate all the resources and leverage them and the relationships we have to help bring and sustain more business in the community. Ultimately, it is about the balance in the community. It's about the well-being of everyone here, and certainly, I believe that a healthy business community goes hand-in-hand with the community. You can't have one healthy without the other. So with that, we also, I will hand out some cards to Scott Collins. This is our economic dashboard, so it's something we just relaunched. It's a way for anyone to look at the website on their phone or otherwise, and allows them to quickly look as to what the state of the economy is. It's got all the major metrics there, including Morro Bay, and we're very excited about it. It really helps to engage people, to learn about the economy, and if they do, I think more seats here will be filled to ask questions and to inquire, and then ultimately spend more time on helping their community. So there's that. Lastly, we will be tomorrow at the economic summit for the state, really looking at helping to change policy around what would become a more business-friendly place. The forecast for the county, however, is on Friday, and I will be sending to Scott and others a recap of that if you cannot make that. So that's an annual event that happens as to looking into the future this coming year for the county's economy. So again, thank you for your support, and if there's any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
Great. Thanks, Mike. Appreciate you being here. Next up for public comment, let's see if I have any more item ones. Carol Truesdale. Welcome, Carol.
Mayor Heading, councilmembers McPherson, Davis, Addis, and Heller, talking about item two, tonight's special meeting. I'm Carol Truesdale, resident homeowner since 1995, and it's been a while since I stood before you. Being that the Worf project is on hold, then perhaps this amendment should also be on hold as well, since Corolo can't do anything to move forward. Their billable hours are consuming precious funds that have been confiscated from the ratepayers. The council should be conscious of public funds that are flying out the door and going to very expensive consultants who obviously aren't doing much for the public or picking up the tab. That money was supposed to provide for things like fixing the pipes and reserved for servicing the debt for the loans. Every expenditure for the project has been paid out of pocket so far. The letter from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service included in the press release from the other day requested information about the loss of the riparian vegetation that will be permanently removed or temporarily disturbed along Morro Creek, where a bridge will be placed. It is their letter that has put the project on hold. Elena's response said that only some willows will be trimmed and no riparian habitat will be moved by its roots. She failed to say that several large trees that provide habitat will have to be moved here as well. The EIR and the conditional CDP never addressed the tree removal. It'll be a significant loss and quite noticeable once removed, since trees are precious. It would be prudent and environmentally recommended the city give an inventory of the trees to be affected. Need to know how many, what type of trees, and their sizes, plus the plans to plant species in other areas to make up for the trees that are being ripped out. That inventory would demonstrate the significance of their loss. Take the southbound on-ramp from Atasco to Row to Highway 1, and just look west to the area where this will occur. A stroll along the bike path would even be better to see what will be gone and forever, and that's a shame. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Next up for public comment is Terry Simons. Terry, welcome.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, council. My name is Terry Simons. I'm sure most of you know me by now. I'm not sure whether I'm speaking as public comment, not on the agenda, or on the agenda, or combined.
This is public comment because it's a special meeting for all items on the agenda, not for anything that's not on the agenda.
I'll blend my two things into one set of comments. I'm here tonight because I've been reviewing the history of the Worf, and it suddenly occurred to me, I was looking at some of the number history and stuff, it suddenly occurred to me that, to the best of my knowledge, Mayor Heading, former Councilman Heading, has never been appropriately recognized for the $50 million-plus reduction that he single-handedly negotiated on the Worf project. And tonight, not to be confused with those who would throw monkey wrenches into projects, I've brought a special award. It's one of my favorite tools. It's called a vice grip, and it does a wonderful job of getting a grip on things, and I'm going to give this to the mayor in the hopes that he can get a grip on the budget for this project and follow the great tradition that he's set for himself in holding the line and, if possible, reducing costs as we move forward into this next critical phase, and as what I am assuming will be approximately $25 million in proposed extras coming downstream from the Worf contractor as they review the items that are out of scope in their original project. So I'll keep this with me for now, but if you can see me later in the meeting, Mr. Mayor, I'll make sure you get it, and I will provide an appropriate certificate as time goes forward. I just didn't have time tonight to put this together. Thank you.
As long as the value's not greater than $45, I can accept that gift.
It's a used tool, and I'll give you the history on that. It belonged to my grandpa Guido, so you'll enjoy it.
Just cognizant of the Brown Act and certain other things. Thanks, Terry. Next up for public comment is David Nelson. Dave, welcome.
You know, what we're here to talk about tonight is criminal. You people, don't you understand there's a national estuary right below where you want to put this ridiculous thing? People are being said to, "One of you shut down the project." I just want it moved. I don't care what you build, because you're not taking any advice from anybody who knows anything, other than the guy that's selling you something, which is the dumbest way to buy anything, having been in business for a long time. But you know, I could go on. I mean, this agreement you're signing, you're talking about still putting it on the TRIW property. I mean, for so many reasons, that's not right. I mean, you paid somebody. You people whine about having to pay for an election ballot, and look at the money you're wasting. I mean, you have consultants telling you that this is the most expensive and the hardest one to work with, and you decide to take it. That doesn't even bring up the estuary. I don't think any of you know what the estuary's worth to this town. You don't treat it like you do. I mean, you show me one, I've asked this before, and nobody showed it. Every new sewer plant I've seen built in this county in the last 40 years have had a major spill, every one of them. You can check it. I've said it many times. I'm not lying up here. I live here. I'm a citizen, and I think what you're doing is outrageous. You spent $12 million. That's half of what Cayucos's sewer plants is. You're blowing this sewer plant up for how many people? I mean, what's going on with the numbers? I mean, I thought we were building something like a 2 million gallon a day plant, which is way oversized to begin with, but now I understand it can go up to 8 million. I don't know where these numbers come from. Numbers keep changing in this game. But I'm just here to say, you know, I have a whole bunch of problems with this thing that you want to put through tonight, but my main gripe, and I'm not going to stop, is you're trying to put it on an estuary. Every one of these committees that you have your fast track with, their job is to protect that estuary. I've shown you two examples of projects being stopped for this very reason, and I'm betting a lot that this is going to be stopped for the same reason. You could put up a smokescreen for a while with the commissions, but in the end, they have to do what's right, and that's a national estuary, and it's always going to be. So you guys are making a big mistake. Like I say, I don't want you to stop the project. Pull whatever you want, but be responsible for what you're building. All I see is a bunch of money blown out. I'd love to see a forensic audit of this whole project. I've seen so many different numbers.
Thanks, David. So just for those of you that may have come in, and I have no more speaker slips, this is a special meeting. Public comment is open for any item on the agenda only, and if you haven't filled out a speaker slip yet and you'd like to come forward, please do so now. Welcome, Barry.
Thank you, Mayor Heading. I want to thank Ms. Addis, Ms. McPherson, Mayor Heading, Mayor Davis is not here tonight, Councilman Davis, and Councilman Heller. You have an extremely big responsibility to run for office and put up with all the flack and try to do the right thing. I know each one of you individually, some better than others, and I respect you, and you have a big responsibility, and I hope we could help you share that responsibility. You can't know everything about what you have to do. You have to rely on your staff and your consultants. We're a small city, so we're vulnerable. We're a vulnerable, every time you have a contractor, all my contracting experience is I like to use the spider technology. If you ever take a spider and put it on a mirror, the project, your size and the spider's and the provider's size should be about the same size. Anytime the spider is bigger than you are, you're going to get eaten. And it looks to me like we're getting eaten, eaten by major contractors. But you're relying on the staff, and this is the biggest infrastructure that this city probably will ever build in our lifetime, and you have competing interests, cost, estuary environment, cost, family. So I want you to know that we're not mad at you. We just feel that this really needs to be well thought of. I think the project could be better operated if we had onsite a person that was under our payroll. We could hire a pretty good manager for about what we pay Mr. Collins, and if he was there five years, four years, it'd be $2 million. Pardon me, $1 million in four years. So for $1 million, we could have a pretty good project manager, and someone would be able to check the books. Right now, you've kind of put that responsibility over on our poor city manager, and I don't know if he's a project manager or not, but he's got lots of other things on his plate. My point is, it's still time, plenty of time to do the right thing. We want the project. We just think that's the wrong place to put it. Thank you.
Thanks, Barry. Public comment is still open. Anybody wishing to come forward, please do so now. Cynthia, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Cynthia Hawley. I'd just like to point out a few of the things that have happened under Corolo's quote-unquote Since they've been managing, we've had at least $13 million Since they've been managing, we've had at least $13 million unconstitutionally set aside for the WRF instead of being spent on fixing the pipelines as it was supposed to be used for, and also the $75 million that was supposed to go for a loan, to pay off a loan for a project that was going to be just a sewer project, and it would be done by next year. That never happened, but the money has been accumulating ever since, and it has been accumulating for the 13 million also. The city decided behind closed doors to change the plant upgrade. It was an upgrade. Then it got changed to a sewage, a new sewage treatment plant, and then it got changed to a reclamation plant. None of those decisions were made in public. There is no public record of any meeting at which the city council met and made that decision. This happens under Corolo. There still aren't any legitimate site plans. We don't have any plans with stamped and signed by an engineer, as far as I know. I don't even think the 60% ones do. None of them are legitimate. The city conspired with the Coastal Commission to illegally eliminate all local public hearings for the WRF under Corolo, and the city, including Eric, conspired with the coastal staff to conceal all project plans and procedurally expunge and eliminate all public participation in the permitting process. The city made the final decision to buy the Tri-W property in an illegal closed session with the developer's representative. The city contracted with Black and Veatch in violation of Public Contracts Code 22162 because they have a, they wrote the facilities management plan and then came back and you hired them illegally to do the design-build contract. The city conspired with the Coastal Commission to materially and fraudulently falsify the data and conclusions of the geological report, and I don't know if you know this, in order to provide false support for approval of the project by the Coastal Commission, and also to misrepresent the project, that the project, to the Coastal Commission, that the project eliminates all coastal hazard risks, which it does not, and to review and approve project plans behind closed doors, because that's what's happening now. All the plans are being reviewed behind closed doors.
Thank you, Cynthia. Public comment's still open for any item on the agenda. Any member wishing to come forward, please do so now. Welcome.
Thank you. I'll make things a little more simple. I'm Mearle Lee. I am the kitchen manager at the Senior Center for Senior Nutrition. I came to say thank you very much for the support that you've given the senior in the past and to give you sort of an update on how things are going. For the last three months, July, August, and September, we served homebound people and people that came into the dining room. There were 107 or 10 participants, and we served 3,600 meals to these people. Most of these people are over 70. They're homebound because they have various problems, or they come into the dining room and we're happy to have them there. Most of them live alone, and most of them are below the poverty level. So our services are very important to them on a regular basis, and so I am asking that the support that you have given in the past can continue, please, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Public comment is still open for any item on the agenda. Any member of the audience wishing to come forward, please do so now. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Melanie Williams-Mahan, and before the meeting, I read some of the letters from members of the Finance Advisory Board here in Moro Bay, and so much of what we suspected but haven't heard about is what I found. I just don't understand, one of the things is why are you pushing this project so hard when our existing sewer will be in compliance after Cayucos completes their facility? You are not listening to your advisory boards, you are not listening to all of your constituents, just the ones who agree with you. You're not listening to anyone except the people you are paying using our extra-large sewer bills. Where are these, all these loans we were to receive? And where is the forecasted cost? Where is Corolo's budget? Why are we paying over $2 million more to a company that has already left us almost a year behind? Why are we paying this company more when they can't provide a budget and they don't anticipate issues like the EPA letter? Corolo is not obtaining permits in a timely fashion. What are they doing besides a song and dance that always ends with "more, please"? That seems to be all we are getting from the mayor and three of our city council members. Please tell us the truth. You work for us. And please do not give Corolo $2,381,968. This is moving into a rolling ball of money, and we haven't even broken ground. You can't blame these delays on citizens. This is on your watch. It's too big, it's too expensive, and it's too dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Public comment is still open for any member of the public wishing to come forward to speak on any item. Please do so now. Welcome.
How are you? Linda Donnelly, resident, Moro Bay. So this is on the Corolo amendment. Here's a thought, if I can get this to cooperate. If I were on the city council, I would ask the finance director how much has been paid to Corolo to date for their services rendered. I would ask the city attorney, has Corolo fulfilled their obligations in their contract for the services they have been paid thus far? On page 111 of the staff report for tonight, the summary table shows Task 6 being $440,189 just for routine project update meetings. Seems like a large expense for meetings, so I would like to know what a typical day for the program manager is like in performing a routine project update meeting here with the city. Does he start charging at his rate of $260 an hour from the time he leaves his office in Fresno and for the time to drive here? Include with that this time, his time in Moro Bay, and if he spends the night here, a hotel room and meal on us as well? Does he then charge for breakfast the next morning and then the time to drive home? How much does that cost the people of Moro Bay for one meeting? Does the council believe that this activity has any deserved value to it? And I also say, you know, what about all the people that come with him? Not only Rickenbach, I know they're probably still on the payroll, but I've seen these meetings packed with about seven or eight of their people and maybe only a few of our citizens because they are just so tired of, I mean, you really have to have been following this project for a very long time to understand what is really happening with this. You know, this stop right now with the EPA and the NEP and everything going on, I don't believe that this $2.6 million-plus is a deserved amendment award to the contract. What has been fulfilled? If you look back at Amendment 1, this is Amendment 2, if you look back at Amendment 1, what has been fulfilled on that? You approved it. You know, this started in November, I believe it was November of 2018 or April 2018, and then in November is when Amendment 1 happened. And now we're going to Amendment 2. We don't own the land, we don't have a shovel in the ground, we don't have the permits needed, and if, I think y'all had just been straight to the point, started the permit process when they should have instead of just trying to go for a consolidated coastal development permit, like the magic wand is going to be waived here, and then we don't have to get these other permits, well, we just found out last week at the city council meeting that we do need them, right? So that's all I got to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Linda. Public comment is still open. Any member of the public wishing to come forward on any item on the agenda, please do so now. Welcome, Dan.
I'm Dan Sedley from Moro Bay. Let me say first and foremost, in case I run out of time, I am opposed to the contract with Corolo for many of the reasons already stated and more of my own. But first, I would like to say I'm against this public comment forum where we're required to speak before the city presentations occur. We would obviously learn more from hearing the city presentations and not ask so many questions that will be answered during the city presentations. So I would hope for consideration that that be changed in these special meetings, that we get to hear and comment after the city presentations occur. That would be helpful to us at least to learn about everything that the city is doing. I too oppose the Corolo amendment because I don't understand the First Amendment being 1.6 million, and now this jumping to 2.4, almost $2.5 million. I don't see the value. I don't see what Corolo is doing that warrants that kind of expenditure increase. I've heard over and over from the city, "We have thoroughly investigated 17 sites. We have thoroughly investigated. We know what every site is about." Yet delay after delay after delay is occurring with this project that shouldn't be happening. If we had thoroughly investigated this South Bay Boulevard site, we would know everything that it's about, and we would have no delays going forward. It should be an expedited process, but yet it's not. We have delay after delay. Corolo is supposed to be meeting with the EPA monthly. This thing with red-legged frogs, guppies, and the snails should not be a surprise, yet it apparently was. That's delayed things maybe indefinitely. We don't know. It's up in the air. This should not be happening if we thoroughly investigated this site or any of the others of the 16 sites. Therefore, I doubt the word of "we've thoroughly investigated 17 sites" because this one just is delayed terminally, it appears. I think that if, even if the city did want to go ahead with Corolo, that this subject should be delayed, that because of all of the delays, this could go more than a year or two years, that there should be a project-long contract and not year after year where the price goes up $1 million every contract. That's not financially feasible for our city, and I would like that looked into. I see the balance from 1.6 to 2.4, almost $2.4 million. That's quite a jump, and I'm wondering how that's earned. It doesn't make sense to me, and I would like to see a project-long contract for whoever gets the contract.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Public comment is still open for any member of the public wishing to come forward on any item on the agenda. Please do so now. Searching, looking, and waiting. More delays. And with that, I will close public comment. Thank you for those of you that came out and gave comments tonight. We'll move into item number one, council review and recommendation on award of community grants, and I will turn it over to Mr. Collins or Ms. Callaway, whomever.
Hello, good evening. Thank you. I'm going to have a pretty brief presentation because this is really an action item for the council to discuss. Back in July, the council adopted the first community grant policy to kind of outline a process for the council bequest budget line item. You have appropriated $16,500 within the general fund to award in community grants. You received eight applications as a result of this process totaling a requested amount of over $30,000. There are some options for the council to consider. We're looking for a recommendation on award of those grant funds. The council can choose to award no grants tonight. You can choose to award $16,500 from the general fund period, or we did provide you with some options for alternative funding within the Economic Development Fund and the Housing and Loaf Fund, so you could make those decisions and recommendations as well. All of the grant applicants were notified of the meeting tonight. You noticed everyone was here to speak on behalf of their application, and I'm happy to answer any questions as well. We did remove the financial data that was included in the applications out of respect for the agencies, but it is available for review if the council wished to. We just wanted to respect any confidentiality that might be in there, so that's why those are not included in the packets that you receive, but we do have them on file at City Hall. So if you have any questions, happy to answer those.
Great, thank you. With that, I will open it up to council questions. Who'd like to start us off? Any questions to my right? Councilmember Heller? None? Councilmember McPherson?
I did have some questions, but for some of the applicants, I think. I'm not sure if Ms. Callaway can answer some of the questions.
But if she tries, and if not, we'll allow them to come up quickly.
Well, I was curious about some of the ones where the budget was missing, what the funds were requested for, so if you could just kind of review that, that would be helpful.
So for, is there one in particular, or would you like me to go through all of them?
Well, I think I know the ones that we've given previously, but any new grants, and some of them were very clear, but others were not clear.
Okay, so with respect to Moro Bay Art Association, that's for summer art classes. By the Sea Productions is sponsorship of their summer production, as she mentioned during public comment. EcoLogistics is to buy an air monitoring control or a monitoring control device, and that was the budget, one budget page was inadvertently left out that should have been included, and I think that spoke to that, but council has copies of that in front of them, I believe, emailed this afternoon. Meals That Connect, a senior nutrition score, is small business. Mentoring Home Share Slow is home sharing options within the city and the county as a whole, and the Diversity Coalition is diversity education programs.
Yeah, I was just, I think I was interested in what proportion of some of their budgets Moro Bay was paying for, and I don't know if you have that information, but to me, that would have been helpful to know what our contribution was vis-à-vis the overall program that they're running.
Sure. I didn't bring that with me, but I'm sure the grantees could probably speak to that if you'd like to.
Anybody in particular that you have questions for?
I think I actually asked it of most of these folks. I think we got some information from Smart Share Housing, but I don't know about the Diversity Coalition or the EcoLogistics grant, if they're seeking funds from other sources for this program.
I think Mr. Sadowski indicated they were seeking a CARB grant, rather significant.
Yeah, but I'm just wondering what proportion of the overall project.
Rich, come on up, Rich, here. Thanks.
They're asking Moro Bay for.
Yeah, it's, the CARB grant is for $50,000. It's for four stationary air monitoring devices around the estuary and in handheld, and the Moro Bay one is for the handheld, and it's an integral part of that CARB grant. We have a copy of it. I have a hard copy of it. I could leave it for you, but it might be kind of late for that now. But basically, it describes and it breaks down the devices, and based on the plan, basically, it's an air monitoring plan, and it'll be for one year, and the stationary devices upload to the cloud, and then we have a route that will do, and the emphasis is on carbon sequestration and working together with Cal Poly NEP on the estuary and the eegras restoration. So it's kind of all linked to that. But it's, to answer your question, $5,000 is the $50,000 grant.
And are you asking any other cities, like Slow?
No, no, we wanted to focus. No. No, we wanted to focus on the State Marine Reserve area and Morro Bay estuary because that's our...we're blessed with a lot of the natural benefits where like...
So, what happens to these monitoring devices at the end of a year?
Well, we're hoping that the program will continue. It's for one year, but we're hoping that, you know, we'll have a program that also integrates like citizen science, you know, where we're going to have like, we'll write the procedures, and then we'll do our routes, and we're hoping to extend and expand the program actually to the whole Estero Bay eventually.
Okay. And I understand that your organization is actually...would get all of the money except for some...a minimal amount that goes to Eco Logistics.
That's correct. Eco Logistics does the administrative stuff for...my understanding, you know, and I'm kind of basic, is that a grassroots organization like Homefront where they use Eco Logistics makes sure that everything's done legally with the 501(c)(3) regulation.
So, you are not...your organization is not a 501(c)(3)?
We're a grassroots, but Stacy is our rep, and she told me, "If you want, come down and speak," and I can speak for Eco Logistics with regards to this.
Okay. Thank you, Richard.
Okay. You're welcome.
Hold on. I think she's not done yet. Yeah. You had another grantee that you wanted...
Well, I...
Oh, for Richard.
I was...I think I understood the Morro Bay Art Association, but again, I'm just curious to know what proportion of the overall program is being requested of Morro Bay in this grant.
Sure. The program is ongoing. We started it a few years ago. So, what we're asking actually is to expound on the program. So, right now, we have...this last summer, we paid over $5,000 for professional teachers and helpers. We need more people. It's expanded. We have more children that need our help and assistance, and they're small children, so we need another additional teacher, and that would cost us an additional $5,000 for the entire summer.
Okay. And you said you give scholarships. Who funds those?
We do.
Oh, you fund the scholarships?
Yes. This money would go directly to the payment of a teacher only.
Right.
The scholarships and all the other programs for children, say, for instance, our help with Morro Bay High School. We also fund their art program. That comes out of our funding separate.
Okay. And what proportion of the cost is covered by fees? I understand you charge some of the kids fees. I assume if the parents can afford it.
Yeah, the fees are generally $15 per student to come in to one of the classes.
So, it does not cover the full cost?
It does not. We're totally in the red on the children programs and all the art supplies that are needed. We know that. That's part of what we do for the community, so it would just help us to expand. We'll also be putting out thousands of dollars ourselves.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Can I add something? Councilmember Heller, you had...oh, yes. Go ahead.
Can you hear? Okay. Richard informed me that the devices would be turned over to the city after a year. Is that correct, Richard?
Okay. Councilmember Heller, do you have a question for Mr. Sadowski?
I do, Mr. Sadowski.
Rich, can you come up for just...
Yeah, thanks.
So, regarding the application to CARB for the $50,000 grant, is the decision tonight made by this council, impact one way or another, your likelihood of getting that grant?
I don't know about with regards to like how that this...I'm not sure as far as from a state level, but what it'll do is this will allow us to get, if we get a handheld device from the city and we get one which is four stationary monitoring devices and one handheld device from the air grant, we would have two handheld devices, and it'll make calibrations easier, and it'll make...it'll just be a more efficient plan, let's say. But if the city does not give us this grant, I think that if the city gave us this grant, it would be looked favorably on this from the State Air Resources Control Board Community Grant, because then it would be...you know, we would be married in. It's a collaboration of state and local agencies through a grant program, and then you could look at it like with the three NGO, you know, working together on an air monitoring program where, you know, to deal with the situation that we're in, you know? And I think that it'd also be a good thing for the city as a forward-looking and using what they can. We're all blessed with where we live, you know?
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Addis, any questions?
I don't have any. I don't have any questions.
Okay. I don't have any questions. The information is very complete, and even though the budgets were included, and I think that was a good question that you asked, I certainly have a very good flavor for each organization and exactly what you're doing, and appreciate the diversity of vics of opportunities that we have to consider tonight. So, with that, thanks, Dan, for talking, Mr. Sedley, about opening up public comment. I'm happy to do that. If anybody does want to come and speak on this item after they've heard the questions, you can do so now. If not, I'll close public comment and bring it back to us and entertain either a motion or discussion.
Discuss.
Yes, sir.
I'm always amazed at the number of organizations out there that I'm not aware of that are doing remarkable things with very little money, and I want to thank all eight of you for applying for the grants. I wish we had more money to give than we have, but as you know, the fiscal condition we're in, we're not in that position. But I want you to all know how much I appreciate all the good things you're doing for the city and the region. The recommendations made in the staff report regarding where some of these funds might come from, Ms. Callaway, I support. I think there were three recommendations that you made about not using grant money, the $16,500 for those three items, and I would definitely support that. Doesn't that...taking those off the table doesn't get us to the 16.5. It gets us above that, and I'm kind of going back and forth between the Morro Bay Art Association and the Eco Logistics Project. On the one hand, I think art is great for our kids. There is a cost associated with it. On the other hand, the Eco Logistics proposal, climate change is something we talk about day in and day out on a kind of a global scale, on a high-level scale. I like this project because even though scientifically, I'm not quite sure what it's going to do, it's a grassroots effort to actually monitor a specific thing that I think is related to climate change, and so I'm inclined to support that. Maybe there's some way we could split the remaining funds between those two. That's just a thought I had. So, those are my comments.
Good. Thanks, Jeff. Appreciate that. Councilmember McPherson, comments?
Yeah. I think maybe our first decision should be whether or not we want to limit the grants to the 16.5, which is what we originally planned, even though I know that Ms. Callaway has been very good about finding other sources. It's still city funds, and we're still in the same financial crisis that we are in. So, I guess I'd like us to first discuss whether we want to stick with the 16.5 or expand and use other resources, if that makes sense.
Yes, and you can offer your opinion since you want to start us off, and then if you'd like to.
Well...
I'm happy to do that.
Okay. You start.
No. No, it was "you start."
Okay. All right.
You brought it up as...
All right. Well, I think my inclination is to stick within the 16.5. I honestly think that we are facing a financial crisis. We're going to ask our voters if they want to support a sales tax increase, and we have to be prudent in the money. And we originally talked about giving 16.5 in community grants, and I'd kind of like us to stick to that.
Could I ask a question?
You can, and I just wanted to make sure I captured what Councilmember Heller had said and also what you'd said, and I thought you had an opinion, and this is a discussion, so I was asking for your opinion. Any other comments? We'll start with that, then. That's fine with me. Councilmember Addis, sure.
By that, do you mean splitting all grant requests? The 16.5 by all grant requests, is that what you mean?
Yeah, that's what we've done previously.
And just split them evenly?
No. No, no, no. I'm suggesting that we may not fund everyone that's on the list this year. My guess is that as we expand the number of people applying, we're going to continue to have more requests than we have monies to give, and so we're going to have to make choices. That's my assumption. I know we've advertised more this year, and so we have new applicants this year, and I'm sure they're going to continue.
Just to add, the home share slow request previously has been funded out of the housing and lieu fund, so just want to clarify that.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
And are you saying do not fund EVC or SCORE out of economic development?
Have we done that before? I don't think we have.
I captured what you said, and I believe what you said was, I wrote it down, that you wouldn't support limit...you wanted to limit it to 16,500, which was the budgeted amount, and you did not support using EDF and/or affordable housing and lieu funds. That's your comments, but if you want to comment on your comments.
Well, I made the assumption that in the past, the community grants came out of the general fund, and I understand that we have other funding sources, but again, we have limited funds overall for the city. So, you asked for my opinion, and that's my opinion. I can be changed. My opinion can be changed. That's the purpose of discussion.
So, to Councilmember Addis, to answer your question, economic development fund, that's a new fund this year, so EVC and SCORE were previously funded out of the general fund. One caveat is, I believe, EVC in 1718, right before I started, was paid for out of what used to be a city manager's contingency fund in the city manager's budget appropriation. That fund...that line item doesn't exist anymore, so your city manager doesn't have a contingency fund, so it's all being requested, or that would come out of the bequest line item.
I'm inclined if housing...I feel like economic development and affordable housing are critical, and I think affordable housing made it into our city goals, and I think we specifically set money aside for economic development because we recognize that our budget is tight and we have to do some economic development. So, I would advocate that we keep EVC and keep SCORE coming out of the economic development fund, and if historically, housing has come out of housing and lieu, that we keep that in there because both of those are objectives or goals that we've set for the city. And I don't see how we develop economically if we're not willing to put some dollars behind our desires. As far as the rest, the 19.5, I could see somewhat of a reduction there. I'm not seeing necessarily projects that I would want to cut completely, though, but I could see doing some kind of a wholesale across-the-board reduction.
Thank you, and my comment would be I also would support utilizing the economic development fund and affordable housing and lieu fund for funding of those important projects because I think that they're not only important, but they've been important in the past to us. With regard to the general fund request amount of 19,500, I do support sticking to the budget and maybe making small adjustments either across the board in the ask for each agency and/or would consider any discussion you might have in reducing a single agency by a certain amount. But in reading the magnitude of differences in these organizations, I think the return on investment for the majority, if not all of them, is really significant and worth the investment by this community. So, I really look at ROI as opposed to just absolute sunk cost when I look at this consideration. I'll summarize. What I've heard is three council members support using the economic development fund and affordable housing and lieu fund, and that Councilmember McPherson, unless she's changed her mind, maybe.
Well, I can be persuaded to change my mind because those are obviously important projects, and I agree fully that we do need to fund them. So, they would be on my list of projects that I would fund. So, yes, if I can go along with my fellow council members and say, "Yes, take the money out of the funds as suggested by our finance director."
So, what I...go ahead, Councilmember Addis.
Well, I was just gonna...like, what if we did a...10% won't get us there, but, you know, rather than a dollar amount, a certain percentage across the board, a 15% decrease across the board or something like that.
On the general fund requested?
Yeah, per grant, so you know what I mean? If we value each of them, I feel like a certain dollar amount may hurt some of them more than it hurts others.
So, let me just start with, do we have good or solid consensus on the EDF fund and affordable housing and lieu fund asks granting those at that level that's there from those funds?
I have a question that Councilmember McPherson raised, is are we going to stick to the 16,500? Do we need a motion for that?
Yeah.
Where does that stand?
I'm going to get to that, and what I heard was that in addition to the general fund request of 16.5, that there was consensus to go above and beyond and fund through the economic development fund and the affordable and lieu fund, an additional $11,000 of project... I support that. I think I heard Councilmember Addis support that, and I thought I heard you say that.
Okay. I wasn't sure that we had to resolve the 16.5 issue first because you raised it.
Yeah. We'll take maybe as one motion, but I'm ready to go there now. So, if I see consensus with those two funds, the affordable housing and lieu fund ask for 5,000, and the economic development fund ask for 6,000 total for the three organizations, seeing head nods?
Yes.
Then let's move to that. Jeff, good point. So, do we want to stick to the general fund requested amount of 16.5 or consider going up to 19.5, which would be outside of the limits we've set, and I'll entertain discussion on that? Or are you looking at maybe across the board, cutting one or more of these by a certain amount to get down to 16.5?
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we stick to the 16.5.
Okay.
I'll second that.
So, there's a motion to stick to the general fund requested amount for those programs set at 16,500 by Councilmember Heller, seconded by Councilmember McPherson, and I'll open up discussion on that. If we do limit it, then there would be secondary consideration of how to get there. So, if you want to make that part of the motion, I entertain restating your motion with changes, and/or do you want to just...that would make it easier than having to have four or five different motions. In other words, you want to get from 19.5 down to 16.5? How do you want to do it?
Maybe someone else can answer that.
Okay.
I wanted to start with the 16.5.
All right. Then I'll go there. So, we have a motion to limit to 16.5, which is a reduction of $3,000 in the general fund allocation. Add a second on that. Any further discussion?
Well, if we're going...if we go that way, my only suggestion would be that we do a percent cut.
Or we could just decide that there are some that we want to fund fully and others that we might want to cut, so the cuts aren't across everyone because the amounts requested are quite different, so...
Yeah, that's why I was trying to look for a single motion, but...
Right.
So, I'm going to stick with the motion as is since it's...
Right.
There's no rescinding of either the first or the second, and did you have any other comments just in general with that? Okay. So, we'll take a roll call vote fairly clear, I think, on what the motion is.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Mayor heading?
Yes.
Motion carries forward, 01.
So, now, I will either entertain discussion on how to get down by $3,000 on the general So now, I will either entertain discussion on how to get down by $3,000 on the general Seeing none?
No.
It's taking too long. Okay, my suggestion is, we're looking at $3,000. I would, let's see, if we did a 10% reduction across the board, that's 500. Jan, have you done the math on that?
If you do a 15% reduction, you're $2,925.
Okay, so if we did a 15.1% reduction or so, that would get us down, and that would be an across-the-board consideration. That would be one way to approach it. The other would be to take individual ones and make recommendations to reduce to a total of $3,000, less than the total amount of 19,500.
I'm in favor of across-the-board reduction.
Okay, thank you. Any favor across the board?
I think I've suggested across the board, so.
Okay, all right. So we have two supporting, basically a 15 point, is it 05%? 15.3% reduction to get us there.
Fine.
Sounds like that. I'll entertain a motion to approve the general fund requested amount for all organizations minus 15.3% of the ask for all organizations, under the general fund requested amount. I guess I'll make that motion, since I said it, how's that?
I'll second.
Okay, so, motion by Mayor Heading to reduce general fund requested amount for each organization by 15.3% to get to the budgeted amount, second by Councilmember Addis. Any further discussion? If not, roll call vote.
Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Motion carries forward, 01.
Thank you for that robust discussion. Now, we do need a motion, I guess, to allocate the economic fund and affordable and Lou, we didn't do that, did we? I don't think so, okay. So I'll go ahead and move that we fund the EVC and the Small Business Mentoring Education Support Program through the Economic Development Fund for a total of $6,000, 5,000 for EVC, 1,000 for Small Business Mentoring Education and Support, and that we fund the Affordable Shared Housing Solutions of SLO for $5,000 out of the Affordable Housing and Lou Fund.
I'll second.
Motion by Mayor Heading to fund, for those two categories, tie goes to which runner I didn't quote. Councilmember Addis seconds, any further discussion? If not, roll call vote.
Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Motion carries forward, 01.
Thank you, and thank you to each organization, not only for your written didactic information, but also for the work that you do in the community that's so important to us, that I know has significant return on investment. Sorry we couldn't do 100%, we're in a tight budget situation, but we appreciate you being here tonight, and that will close that item. Thank you. Yeah, so I have a request for a biofluid break for two minutes. Go ahead and do that. Thank you.
We can secure outside of like, come out of the elevator square, and off to one side of one office space, it's like 2,000 square feet. And then we have our space on the right side. There are two doors, each of those spaces, and you go into another hallway, and then the entrance to our actual suite, right here. So we can lock two doors, so it's pretty secure already. And it's a, we're gonna get a couple chambers, and we're gonna lock each door inside of the suite, and so that one goes forward, and so we record motion between 5:00 and 5:00 clock.
We are back, welcome, ready to move forward with item number two. I wanted to make one comment. Mike Mancheck from the EVC, which was one of the organizations that we did make an award to for economic development, Councilmember Addis is the appointed liaison to the board. It is an ex officio position, non-voting, so I didn't want anybody to think there was a need for her to recuse herself and not participate in the vote for allocation of funds to that organization, just wanted to make that clear. So, totally appropriate, everything is fine, and every city has an appointed liaison, it's ex officio, non-voting, and most all cities contribute, so, thank you. With that, we will move to item number two, approval of amendment number two, to the water reclamation facility program management contract and authorization for Public Works Director to sign the agreement, and I believe I'm turning it over to Mr. Leivik.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Yes, you're correct, this item is to approve amendment number two, to our agreement with Corolo Engineers for WRF program management. The amount is in the sum of $2,381,968. The services that are being requested by Corolo for this next amendment, and just want to point out, when we originally issued the contract in April of 2018, this was for a long-term, multi-year contract, which we said we would come back with periodic amendments to that contract, but, and this is one of those periodic amendments, so these are anticipated amendments to the contract. Services include construction support, development of an outfall management plan, updates to the council and advisory bodies, budget and schedule management, preliminary design of recycled water facilities, design support for our conveyance system, public outreach, land use, and potable reuse planning, permitting, excuse me, and funding support for our funding sources, which are currently the EPA WFI loan, the State Water Board, state revolving fund loan and grant, and we're continuing to pursue U.S. Bureau of Reclamation Title 16 grant money. Also, they need to manage their team as part of this amendment. There are, this amendment will take us through the end of this fiscal year, but there are several items that are not really tied to the fiscal year that will extend beyond, and we'll talk about the dollar amounts in just a couple of slides. They include the outfall management plan, the recycled water injection well preliminary design, and our permitting components with the Regional Water Quality Control Board for outfall, the facility, and the State Water Resources Control Board Division in Drinking Water for our water reclamation component indirect potable reuse. So the original estimated contract value for program management was $7.7 million for the life of the project. The original contract authorization, or task order, was $292,000. Council issued amendment number one last year in the amount of $1 million, a little over $1,600,000, and that was to carry us through December 31st of this year. Amendment number two, currently on the docket here, is for almost $2.4 million, and that'll carry us through this fiscal year with several items being carried over into the next fiscal year. And we plan on aligning the amendments with the budget year and future requests, so you'll see a contract amendment coming forward during budget time for the next three fiscal What we've spent so far on the project with Corolo is through January 31st of 2019, $1.3 million. The remaining budget through fiscal year, the end of this fiscal year, with this amendment is $2.8 million. The anticipated need for this fiscal year is $2.4 million. That gives us a little over $400,000 that we would carry forward from this budget year to the next budget year to address those items that I talked about earlier that are not tied to the fiscal year. The permitting issues, the recycled water injection well design, and the outfall management There's also been increase to the scope of this project. We've added additional public outreach efforts. We've included scope items, about $900,000 in scope items that were to be performed by our previous program manager in conjunction with Corolo to complete out this phase of the project, and that firm declined to continue to work with the City of Morro Bay. And there's, will be additional construction management effort needed to deal with the changes in the schedule. We are now not, likely not, aligning the construction schedule for the plant with the conveyance system, so there'll be additional time needed for construction management. Summarizing the budget, the original estimate was a little over $7.6 million. The basis of the $126 million rate analysis was a budget to Corolo of $8.7 million. That included that, those additional scope items that were to be performed by the previous program manager, and this rebase line budget takes us to almost $9.8 million in total program management costs. That concludes my summary of the staff report, I'd be happy to answer any questions. We also have Mr. Caceres here from Corolo, if we need additional information, our finance director and city manager, to help.
Thank you, Rob, appreciate that. With that, I'll open it up for council questions on this. Who'd like to start us off this evening?
I'll start, if you'd like me to.
Looking for volunteers, if not, I'll appoint somebody.
All right, I'll volunteer.
Thanks, Marla.
First, let me just ask, I think you mentioned that the expenditures, you said through January 2019, but our slide says July 31st, 2019? Is it July?
Yes, it is July, sorry for misspeaking.
Yes, all right. And why would you not do it through June 30th, would be the end of the fiscal year?
That's just the most recent information that we had, accurate information on, from working with our finance department.
Okay, and just so that the public understands clearly the relationship between these amendments and the fiscal years, the current amendment goes through December 31st, is that correct?
The current amendment one ends the contract period, the overall contract goes through 2023. This amendment one was intended to be completed by December 31st of this year. This amendment two will complete work through the end of this fiscal year with some carryover, and then we'll have another amendment that will align the contract authorizations, or sometimes known as task orders, that we're giving them little pieces of the project to move forward, or big pieces of the project to move forward on each year, rather than, an alternative would be to issue a contract for 9.9, or whatever that number was, million dollars, and not come back each fiscal year with contract amendments.
And was this originally, was this the way that the contract was originally developed and signed and agreed to?
Correct, to come back for these periodic amendments.
And were they tied to phases of the project, or what were they based on?
They are tied to phases and the fiscal year, to add confusion to the project. So phase one was project initiation, where they were to learn more about the project, and onboarding to work with our former project manager. Phase two was to get us to almost where we're at right now, ready to construct. Ideally, we would have issued a notice to proceed for construction on October 23rd, but we're still working with EPA on a couple of issues. Third phase is the construction, the construction phase of the project, and the fourth phase is the outfall management plan, reclaimed water injection wells, and those items that are not really conveniently tied to a fiscal year.
So when we talk about the total contract, what you're essentially proposing now is that the total contract to Corolo would be 9.778, is that correct?
That's correct, our estimated costs, and we will bring, continue to bring amendments forward in this fashion, with the goal to tie it to, with a plan to tie it to the fiscal year.
So when we say that the original basis for program management, which included work to be done by Mike Nunley and is now transferred to Corolo, that explains, you know, roughly 1.1 million of this additional, what is the other? Approximately 1 million?
The other items, let me get to that slide. There's additional public outreach needed to inform the community during construction of the conveyance system. Other out-of-scope items in the project management effort, that were not anticipated when the $7.64 million estimate was developed, and there will be additional contract, or construction management efforts associated with not having the facility construction aligned with the conveyance construction.
Okay, and can you expand a little bit on the additional costs for public outreach? What that's for?
The preferred alignment, the selected alignment by city council is coming from the lift station A, which will be near the existing treatment plant site, heading up Tascota Road Bike Path, hitting Main Street and Quintana, and then down Quintana to South Bay Boulevard. That involves quite a bit of coordination with the many businesses along there. Even with the additional public outreach, the, moving the construction to some of the other alternatives that were feasible, added between $5 and $12 million to the project costs by moving them across to the other side of the highway, or the, other through-town alternative was bringing the Forest Maines down the Embarcadero to Pacific, and up Pacific to, near Quintana, and then down Quintana. So this was the least impactful and the lowest-cost option to construct that conveyance system, but it does come with its challenges in coordinating with the public. But it does come with its challenges in coordinating with the public. Now, I think as we've talked about before, this is a time and materials contract. So we only pay for that work effort that is actually expended. So if we come to the conclusion that we've done all the public outreach and we haven't come up to the, I'm going to have to go to the staff report because I don't remember the dollar value, let's say it's $500,000 for the sake of discussion, and don't expend that full amount, we won't be billed for that amount. It's just money that will stay in the budget. So we're only billed for the work that actually occurs.
And you've already done a fair amount. I know they've started to do public outreach already with the businesses.
Tried to meet with all the business owners or managers along the route. The public outreach specialist and one of the Corolo deputy project manager and engineer discussed the aspects of the project with those business and property owners and tried to understand their needs in accessing their property to how best to accommodate that with the project. And just as I've said before, we're going to do our best to accommodate, but there will be inconveniences, as with every major construction project that takes place on a street involves.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any questions?
I felt the staff report was abundantly clear. I feel like we've talked about this a lot. I recognize these are expected changes. I know the answer to this question, but just for the public and to say it one more time, will this increase water rates?
No, this was accommodated in the existing budget.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hiller.
Okay. So I was hoping our city attorney would be here tonight, but maybe our city manager can answer this. So the way this is written, we're asking the Director of Public Works to sign this $2.3 million amendment. Is he authorized to sign that without your signature? Or, because I know you signed the original agreement, so I need some clarification legally on who can sign this amendment.
Rob, Mr. Livik has signed the original and then the amended amendment number one that went through the city attorney's office, so I don't see why that's a problem now. Perhaps Rob can, you know, take it further.
I think whatever council, staff member council authorizes to sign a contract, that's who signs the contract.
Okay. So I'm looking at the signature page. I don't see Mr. Livik's name on here. That's my question. And I didn't realize he had authority to spend $2.3 million of taxpayer money. But I'd like some clarification from the city attorney on that if I could get.
So the council is authorizing the expenditure. Rob is signing on behalf of the city.
Okay. And Mr. City Manager, have you reviewed this proposed amendment in detail, and do you support it as written?
I've reviewed this. I've reviewed their performance, and I do support it as written.
Okay. Some of the questions I have are for Mr. Casares, but Mr. Livik, you're certainly welcome to answer them.
Would you like him to come up? He certainly can.
Either one, I'm not sure. I don't want to rain anyone's parade here.
Eric, you want to come up to the podium? Let you tag team the answers.
You guys can tag team it, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
So this is a very complex amendment, in my opinion. I've spent about four hours trying to sort through it. I want to make sure that I understand it and the public understands it. Looked at the original agreement quite a bit, signed in April 2018. Describes management services in three phases. There's a scope of work that describes what that work will be. And your estimate of cost for these services was about $7.7 million, if I'm correct, in that range.
That's correct, yes.
And it also said, you had a calendar with it, and I believe you said the 7.7 would cover us through 2021. Is that right? Because somewhere else in the scope services, 2022 was mentioned. Can you clarify that?
I need to go back and look at that, but the intention was that the 7.7 million would take it through the end of the project completion.
Okay. So for the record, at that time, you assumed that you could manage the project and haven't completed by 2021?
I'd need to go back and look at the details of the agreement. We negotiated that agreement essentially before we came onboard, and so that was, I'd have to go back and look at the dates, but that was anticipated through the completion of the project.
Okay. If you could clarify that, that would be great, because the scope of work has the two different dates. One place it says 2021, and the other page following it says 2022. So this initial agreement, so the amendment we're looking at tonight, almost $2.4 million. In looking at this, it seems to say that the services will start January 1 of 2020 and go through 6/31/20. Is that correct? So it's for six months?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. So why are we all of a sudden rolling over to a fiscal year approach as opposed to just keeping the same sequence that we're doing?
The original approach was to go with the fiscal year. The city had some constraints when the agreement was originally signed. The city had existing contracts with other members of the program management team, and there was a reason why that first phase and the duration of that first phase was done as it was done. And so that initial value, or that additional contract value of 292,000 was intended to get us through roughly the first six months. There was not enough capacity in the city. The city was not willing to move forward with a larger initial contract value. And one, we didn't necessarily want to commit to a larger contract value, because we wanted to get the time to come onboard, to learn what was going on with the program, and so that we could better scope in detail the future phases of the work.
Okay. So the $2.4 million for Amendment 2 is for six months of work. And if I were to extrapolate that as kind of your fee going forward, that would come up to almost $4.8 million per year to manage this project through the construction and the heavy part of the project. Is that fair to say?
No, that's not correct. We're currently looking at a total expenditure in total from their start date back in April of 2018 to about 9.7, 9.8 million is the total.
To what point in time? Till the TSO date, or?
No, through the completion of the recycled water facilities and the injection wells, which are currently planned for the early part of 2023, based on the latest schedule.
So the TSO date's though like March, isn't it?
The TSO date is earlier in 2022. So we're looking at, so the compliance with the TSO is tied to the substantial completion and startup of the actual water reclamation facility itself. That is slated to, based on the latest schedule. Obviously, we're still going through some things with the environmental process, but we were looking at February of 2022. TSO compliance date is February of 2023, so about a year ahead of that TSO compliance date.
So in looking at the numbers here that support the amendment amount of 2.4, I see a line here that Councilmember McPherson has raised, which about public outreach. And between you and your subconsultant, it looks like you've budgeted $425,000. Is that going to be spent in the next six months? And can you tell me what the basis of that number is?
Sure. So that's intended to run roughly through the next fiscal year, as we're putting a lot of time into public outreach right now. And as Rob mentioned, or Scott mentioned, we have a member of our technical staff that is managing the conveyance facilities portion of the project, working with our public outreach consultant. They're meeting with members of the public. It's intended to carry us through the end of the fiscal year. We may not spend all of that, and so that would roll forward into the next fiscal year.
So you're saying the $425,000 would be spent over the next 18 months? Is that how you've budgeted that?
So I don't know if that number is exactly correct, based on kind of where we are and what we've spent to date. So we've spent roughly $115,000 on public outreach to date. The amendment number one had a total budget of $181,000 for that public outreach effort. So we've got about $67,000 remaining in our public outreach bucket right now. The amendment number two identifies about $245,000 for public outreach. So if you add those two together, we're really looking at about $311,000 is what we currently have, both what we're carrying over from amendment number one, as well as what we're asking for amendment number two. That would carry us forward to the end of the fiscal year.
I got to tell you, I really don't know how I'm supposed to keep track of these numbers. I'm looking at this spreadsheet here, and it shows 425 as the basis for this amendment. Doesn't talk about funds being carried forward. As an owner trying to protect public money, how am I supposed to make sense of this?
I'm looking at task 11, and it looks like it's 245,000, so I'm not following.
I'm looking at page 111 of the staff report, bottom of the page, line 11, public outreach. Corolo's 117,000, subconsultants 307, total 425. It doesn't talk about what is being carried forward. It doesn't talk about, is this a cap? Or is this just an ongoing thing that you're going to ask for every year?
The 425, the $425,000 is the cap that was established by amendment number one. There was a certain value of amendment number one. We're asking for an additional 245,000, which brings that total to 425,000. Through September of this year, we've spent 115,000 roughly.
Where's the 245 show up? I got to tell you.
420, the 245 is what we're asking for in amendment number two. The details for each task is included in the staff report.
That doesn't correspond with what you've got here, but we can talk about that. Fly them again. We're of construction support down at the bottom there, number 18. Got Corolo 356, subconsultants 432, $789,000. Is this for six months? Is this for 18 months? Where does this take us?
This is essentially from our anticipated start of construction date, which was, we were anticipating October, November time period through the end of the fiscal year. With the shift of construction, we will use, this money should carry us out through, is anticipated to carry us out through the end of the fiscal year, it will actually, we'll end up rolling over quite a bit more money than what we had anticipated, depending on when we actually initiate construction.
You talked about your level of effort having been increased, specifically public outreach. Is there some way the city could do our own public outreach and not have you and your crews do it?
I did want to just mention one thing. I can address that. But in terms of the increase in public outreach and the 9.7 and 9.8 million figure, those are forecast numbers that we currently have in the budget. So what we're currently have in our 125.1 million budget that we presented back at the last council meeting, around the quarterly report, these are forecasted amounts that we have currently sitting in our budget as line items. And so we're looking at something like, based on what we're currently forecasting, what we spent, what we think we're going to spend, we think that we may spend up to $825,000 over the life of the project. We don't know if we're going to spend that much. I mean, we want to make sure that we have enough in the budget moving forward that we're accurately accounting for that amount.
Goes back to my question, can we do the outreach ourselves instead of having your team do it? Because you're kind of high-priced folks.
I would have to defer to the city regarding the resources for them to do that.
Okay. For the record, is Corolo willing to commit to $9.7 million to complete the project?
That's something that we can talk about. Again, there's things within the program that are outside of our control, and a large portion of our work going forward is going to be based on construction management as we move into construction. Things happen, construction schedules can change, and so we can tie the contract value to a schedule, and that's something that we can entertain. The original concept was that we would come back on a fiscal year by fiscal year. That was kind of the decision that was made, more palatable for the city to authorize smaller allocations versus one large single sum. Again, I would be open to whatever the city wants to do at that point.
Okay. Also, your level of effort comments, talked about inclusion of out of scope items.
Mm-hmm.
Can you elaborate on that? What's out of scope? Didn't we hire you to manage this whole project? And didn't you know what the project was when you signed the contract?
We knew what a large portion of the project was. We did not anticipate a couple of things. One thing is the additional construction management effort associated with some of the changes in the schedule. So the best way to describe that is the original schedule, and when we first came onboard, we had anticipated that we would be building the pipelines, which would shortly be followed by completion of the actual water reclamation facility itself. And right around the time that the water reclamation facility was being completed, we would also be completing the recycled water facilities of the injection wells. So based on our current schedule, as we've discussed a lot, we've had some pretty significant delays this year in being able to do the work that we need to do in order to push forward the design and construction of those recycled water injection wells. That has now taken what we thought was going to be a concurrent construction, and we were going to have a single construction management crew managing a couple of these projects together. Now we've got to keep that crew, or we've budgeted to keep that crew on for roughly another 10 months to complete those recycled water wells.
Okay. So for the record, didn't we hire you to manage the schedule and the budget for the project?
That's correct.
And yet we're being asked to pay additional funds because the schedule has been changed for some reason that's out of our control? Aren't we paying you to do that?
That's correct.
To keep that from happening?
Yeah, that's correct.
Well, why do things get out of sync? Why are we paying more?
Because of schedule delays, and I would say that while I'm ultimately responsible for the schedule and the scope, there are things that happen over the course of this project that are not necessarily within my control. This work is on a time and materials basis. We're talking about construction management, which is directly tied to having bodies out in the field, and that's tied to the construction schedule. So that is a big reason for this additional scope work. The other item was the outfall management plan. Again, we initially negotiated and developed our scope of work, or our overall scope of work for the agreement back in April of 2018, before we had, you know, spent a single day on the job. We did our best of identifying all of the work that needed to be done, and there's some additional items that have come up that require them to be done that weren't originally budgeted for.
For the record, have your hourly rates increased from the initial contract of April 218 to the amendment that we're looking at tonight?
Yeah, they increase on an annual basis by a few percent. I think it's right around 2.5%.
Did we agree to that contractually when we signed the original agreement?
I need to go back and look at the actual language in the agreement regarding the escalation of the rates.
Okay. Do you mark up your subconsultant fees?
We do, yes.
And how much?
10%.
Okay. That's all I have for now. Thanks. Thanks, Mr. Casares. Appreciate it.
Any more questions?
Well, I have questions, but I don't know if they're for you.
Okay.
If do, I'll invite you back up. So question for city manager Collins. Scott, can you tell me if, since you made the original decision not to hire a quote-unquote "project manager" for this overall project, but a program manager? Has the performance of the existing program manager met your intent? And are you satisfied with the performance of Corolo to date?
Yes, I am, and I care to expand on that if you allow.
Please.
So in researching kind of program and project management last year before bringing forward a recommendation to city council, kind of looked at the kind of top 10 or top five kind of attributes you look for for a program manager or program management team. Came away with a list, they got off the CIO website, so this is, you know, information officers, but they do a fair amount of project management. They look for leadership, motivation, communication, organization, prioritization, problem solving, and adaptability. And I looked through each of those main categories, and Eric and his team have hit high marks on that. Now, how does that translate out into the community? Well, we do have members of the community who don't like this project, and that sort of gets conflated with the success of the project and how it's moving forward. So that's one part of it. We've had a lot of issues that have come up that are related to federal funding for this project, which in the long run is worth the effort. We're talking about 20 to 40 million in savings and debt service, so we're spending some money upfront to ensure that we get that money, and that we don't start and have issues later on. So this has been a challenging process, but Eric has been positive. He's set a good vision. He's managing the project well. He communicates in a language that we understand. The city manager has never overseen a project The city manager has never overseen a project of this size and scope. He has extremely well-organized process documentation within and without the Corolo team. I mean, we're talking a number of subconsultants that are directly under him and also under city purview. He seeks focus on the critical pieces and ignores the distractions and the noise that gets in the way of doing the right thing at the right time. And we have faced a number of challenges, and he's a problem solver, and his team is a problem solver. I've seen it myself. He identifies, properly identifies and manages risk. And he's adaptable to the numerous changes that have come forward, both in the industry and regulations, and what we're experiencing on the ground. So I am extremely satisfied with his performance and that of his team. That does not mean we haven't faced challenges and that we will continue to face challenges. We're talking about three major projects in one. And community members who are trying to derail the project. Those are managing in both directions. So as far as I'm concerned, he's doing a good job. He's open, honest. He's optimistic in the faces of all these challenges. He's determined and collaborative. He's a strong advocate for our city and the work with Black and Beach Philo, with our regulators, with the other agencies that are involved, and the alphabet soup. The list goes on and on. I'm entirely satisfied with his performance and believe they have earned the right to continue to lead us in the right direction to get this project done.
Thanks. Do you recall initially the, and Mr. Leibig, I guess this is to you as well, the initial engagement, some $290,000 or whatever for review? Is my memory correct that in that initial review, when we changed what I'll call program managers, because I believe this is really what we're talking about, not a project manager, but a program manager, from Nunley and Associates to Corolo, during that initial engagement, did they not reduce the budget for the overall project from some $168 million down to $126 million through that effort?
The project was initially budgeted $167 million.
Sorry, but $167?
Yes. And through the work of the team, through the work of the Blue Ribbon Commission, through the work of the council and other participants, that budget was brought down to $126 million, which was the basis for the rates for 2018, which led to the surcharge for $41 per household.
Was the program manager significantly involved in vetting that and helping to come to that conclusions, or significantly assisting in coming to that conclusion and that reduction?
Yes. At the table with the finance director, our rate consultant, and the Blue Ribbon Committee, eight to 10 meetings, very detailed discussions about what needs to be included, what doesn't need to be included in this project, how to get the rates down to as affordable levels possible. Understand they are high, no doubt, but he's very instrumental in driving down those costs as much as possible.
Just to reiterate the question that council member McPherson asked, the original estimated early total budget for Corolo was $7.64 million. But that also included an additional, not within the 7.64, an additional $940,000, assuming that Michael K. Nunley would be continuing. So in my recollection, the actual total estimate was really a total of $8.58 million. Is that a correct assumption on my part?
That's in the ballpark, yeah.
Okay. So with this amendment and this overall increase in the total project budget, we're really talking about a million two and some change roughly, basically.
For the life.
Just rough math.
Yeah, that's about right.
I think the important point is that Corolo's 7.6 million initially had an additional $940,000 included for the continuation of Michael Nunley and Associates, which didn't happen. And as a result of recommendations made by the program manager, that was cut.
Correct.
Okay. The, if you look at the total cost of the project of $126 billion, the percentage for program management is 7.7% of the overall project. That is, if the project comes in on budget and doesn't come under budget, which we obviously hope that it will. Do you know, Mr. Leibig and/or Mr. Collins, what the average is in the industry for program, not project management, costs for large projects like this? Approximately, and I'm not going to hold you to, or maybe I'll ask it this way. Is 7.7% of the total project cost within the realm of normal program management fees for organizations like, who manage programs like this?
It seems within the realm of the reasonable amount of program management fees. I know on the higher billion-dollar projects, you don't see that percentage. There's a maximum number of bodies that you can put on a project. And of course, you know, smaller projects will be a higher percentage of costs because there is some level of effort that just doesn't change to the projects. But it is within, I would say, a reasonable amount for percentage of project cost for program management.
Well, in my research, it usually is anywhere from 6% to 12%, depending upon the size of the project. And I'll just throw that out with a couple of benchmarks that I looked at. And certainly 7.7% of total project cost seems reasonable to me. The next question I have is, does Mr. Casares simply submit invoices and nobody looks at them, just signs them, and you automatically make payment? Or is there a different mechanism for reviewing the invoices that are submitted by task, by task order number, by hour, by individual, as laid out in this budget that you're looking at here? Maybe you could refresh my memory on how we do that.
So they're reviewed both by our finance department and then by Public Works, going through the summary of tasks delivered and comparing that to the project scope of work.
Thank you. Mr. Leibig, is it unusual for projects of this magnitude, once an individual gets into the project, to have either the morass of significant agencies, both involved at the federal, state, and local level, that have various onerous regulations that they have to adhere to? Is it not uncommon for scopes to change with regard to projects like this?
I think it's very common for, especially once you involve the federal funding with the project. We only have to look back a few years to our Choro Creek Bridge. It was before I started with the city, but U.S. Fish and Wildlife held up that project for several months going forward. And it was unexpected because it met all the in sequa requirements. The federal has a higher level of standard. You know, when we're talking about the red-legged frog, I don't think we could have picked a site of the 17 that we looked at that isn't in so-called critical habitat. The entire county is, or this portion of the entire county is painted with that broad brush. We didn't anticipate a red-legged frog because there hasn't been one sighted near the site since 1996.
So it's fair to say that upon the initial presentation of a budget for a project with this scope, that changes like this do occur because of the significant number of agencies and unanticipated cost increases? And sometimes reductions can occur because of that?
That's correct. And it is, as far as reduction goes, it is a time and materials not to exceed contract. We only are billed for the work that is actually done. It's not a fixed fee contract.
Great. And Mr. Collins, can you estimate the value of the input of Corolo in obtaining or assisting in getting commitments, just about to obtain, both WIFIA and our SRF loans?
Yeah, they've been invaluable in that pursuit. With regular check-ins with WIFIA staff, subconsultant discussions, working with us, talking with our lobbyists, making trips to Sacramento, going out to DC with us. They're very, very attuned to the needs of those agencies. They help with regulations. They understand the regulations when it comes to the drinking side of this equation. And as I mentioned before, it's the problem-solving piece. None of this stuff is simple. There's no really blueprint. It's a plan to start with, and then the day one, it changes. Anybody who's worked in project management knows that. So, you know, they're able to make those changes and adapt as needed, but have been very helpful in that regard, and we wouldn't be able to do it without their assistance.
So it's fair to say that the depth of knowledge within their organization and the costs associated with that were an integral part of us being able to attain low-interest loans from WIFIA and SRF in addition grants that will probably significantly allow the council to consider rate reductions in the future?
Yes, absolutely. I don't think any of us anticipated the sheer amount of paper and reports and studies and discussions that would be required to obtain this, to complete it since your deal, to get the loan agreements. I don't think any of us had any idea. But thankfully, we've had their services to get us through that process, also to line us up for SRF funding at a really low interest rate with $5 million in grants.
Great. Thank you. That's all the questions I have. I will open it up for public comment, as I promised, and this is for specifically this item only. If anybody wishes to come up and give public comment, please feel free to do so now. No, this is just for this item on the agenda, yes. Welcome, Terry.
I'm sorry, I can't help myself. I'm having a moment of deja vu. I remember one of the first meetings I attended, and I questioned the Nunley group and our city engineer regarding the need for a lift station in the early days of discussion on this. And the answer that I got ultimately from the group was, well, that's not in our contract. I'm very concerned of this out-of-scope issue. And I'm especially concerned about the continuing need for public outreach. I think that those should have been implied in the nature of the work. I spent a lot of hours researching Corolo's projects all around the state, looking at their history and looking what they're doing. This is a very large and very sophisticated engineering firm that handles very complex problems, and they appear to handle them very well. I don't understand why, in their first round, I can see that a couple hundred thousand dollars would only help them get their feet wet. But then they had another amendment for over a million dollars. And I'm assuming when they did that amendment, there was a rescoping at that point. And for a million dollars at that early stage, one would hope that the scope of issues and potential pitfalls and other agency involvements and things would have been fairly clear since we knew we were going for funding with state revolving fund and WIFIA. To now hear that this next round is going to involve even more out-of-scope, and especially the public outreach, my God, let's blame it all on the public, that we have to go and hold the hand of the public. This has been a political problem, not an engineering problem. And I think the political problem should be handled by you folks and your staff, or hire your own PR person. Let's start calling it what it is. It's public relations. It's not public outreach. We're dealing with the same problem of trying to get a tax increase on the sales tax. And the perception is, is that you're hiring consultants to sell the public on something that the public knows full well what you're trying to do. Don't try to sell the public on the benefits of having this great disaster, what I call the path of destruction up Quintana and Main. I've been in this business for 50 years. I know what Quintana and Main are going to look like when you take an entire lane out just to dig a trench, and you need the other lane for a continuing stream of vehicles taking in and bringing out materials. There will be days, literally days, when entire blocks will not be accessible to the owners or the public, unless you put everything at night. And I'm sure no one has done a budget analysis of what shifting this over to a nighttime project would mean. So I think you need to be a little harder. Get those vice grips out, squeeze that budget just a little harder, and get your consultants to basically tell you more now, or you're going to be, at the end of this next period, you're going to be looking at another $2 million amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment's open. Please, no clapping. Thank you. You can wave your hand, but don't clap. Welcome, Lyda.
Yeah, what I'd like to see is, you know, they're getting paid a lot of money. Nobody's arguing that. Whose job is it to update the website? Is this low-hanging fruit here? We're always looking for the documents that he's selling, telling you he's doing, yet we can't find them? They're not timely to the public so that we can go to the WRF site and read them or review them? For those of us that are following this, you know, we have to send an email or call someone. I mean, you should be getting these things in your agenda packets. You know, when one of the city council meetings, when I think it was Councilman Heller asked where the comments that were, and then Mr. Leibig said they're in with your agenda, they were not in your packet? Because if they were in your packet, they would have been in our packet that we pulled off that internet. But you didn't question. Question. You're elected to do a job that I don't see you doing. And I think that's the frustration that we feel. Let's get the website up to date. I'm not even sitting here calling it out about this $2.6 million, right? Can we just stay on this tush to get it updated? Please? Links. I know these documents cost a lot of money, but links to the documents would be just fine. Because they're electronic, so let's get it done. That's what I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment's still open for this agenda item. Any other members of the public wishing to come forward to speak on this issue? Please do so. Welcome.
Hi, good evening, City Council. My name's Mimi Goldberg. And regarding the water reclamation, I want to ask a question. The property where it is currently, what's going to happen to it, and how long will it take to do whatever's going to happen to it? You guys own it, correct?
It's a public comment. Go ahead and make your comments.
Oh, I believe that you guys are doing this because that's prime real estate. And it's really sad because we have a beautiful estuary, and God forbid, I've seen so many things, you know, in the highest contamination in the bay, and the oysters, and people were poaching them and trying to sell them to, and a little kid and an old person would have eaten them. It was, it's just, we live in a beautiful sanctuary, and I'd like to keep it that way. Thanks.
Thank you. Public comment is still open. Any members of the public wishing to come forward, please do so now. Welcome back.
I am a little, I'm Melanie Williams-Mahan again. I'm a little concerned about the fact that, yes, we don't have answers to these questions. I don't understand why at this stage of the game, we don't have these answers. I mean, he's our project manager. Shouldn't he know the answers or at least have them here? He knew this was going to happen tonight. And I'm also tired of getting blamed. You know, I mean, again, we get this from our city manager. I don't want to get blamed for withholding, you know, for holding this up. You guys are holding it up. You know, I'm not the one that has to file these things. I'm not the one that gets the letter from the EPA and loses it for a few days. Come on, people. You know, I mean, I'm sorry. This is just, and the public outreach comment really got me, because I didn't see any of it. So I agree, this might be something that you guys want to take on, because they're not doing their job.
Thank you. Public comment's still open. Anybody wishing to come forward, please do so now. Looking around, seeing no movement. I'll close public comment, bring it back to council. Okay, discussion. I will entertain either a motion and/or further discussion, whichever you would prefer. Who'd like to start us off?
I'd like to start.
Sure. Councilmember Heller?
First of all, Mr. City Manager, I understand the position you're in. It's a difficult position, but I do take issue with your comment that the members of the community just don't like this project. Four years ago, I got off my couch when this project was priced at one point- at $1.66 million. And a whole bunch of people were unhappy, not just me. And because of our pressure, we got the same response from the council back then that we're getting tonight. Because of our pressure, magically, this is now a $126 million project. And I would like to know from this council and those members who were on the council at that time, where did the $40 million go? How did you cut $40 million out of this project? I don't know. Somebody needs to answer that question. You just had a bunch of meetings and all of a sudden, it's a $126 million project and we're supposed to believe that that's actually going to happen? It makes no sense. But more importantly, your comments are unacceptable. Do you think that the people who have put in hundreds, if not thousands of hours, on the CPAC and the WRF CAC are just people who don't like the project? Is that what you're saying? Because that's what it feels like to me. That's what it feels like to the public and it's outrageous. The people who've put in this time on these advisory committees are not being listened to. The meetings are not being held. Retired professionals with expertise are being ignored when in fact, they could actually help this project and help the city. But the city, for at least the last five years that I've been involved in politics, refuses to put anyone on the committee that doesn't agree with their position. And if you don't agree with the position, well, then we just won't have the meetings. When I asked to schedule a WRF CAC meeting, because I'm the liaison to the WRF CAC, I get the runaround. No one seems to know who schedules the meetings. Is it the city manager? Well, I got to talk to staff. Does Mr. Leibig want the meeting? Well, we need to talk to Mr. Leibig. It's outrageous that those meetings are not regular and that the people who care about this project and about the city do not meet and their comments written down and documented and sent to the council. And you need to change your attitude.
Hold on. Any other comments?
Yeah, the other thing I'd like to comment on-
Would you like to address the agenda item?
Well, yeah, I would like to address the agenda item.
I'd like to address the agenda item.
Yeah, hold on one second. He's got the floor. Hold on just a minute.
The agenda item, I don't think it's any mystery to anybody that I'm completely against it. I've worked in this industry for years. I understand the annual review of scope and I've worked for large public agencies that when the review comes forward on an annual basis and this extra level of effort stuff comes up, the agency has the right and the obligation to ratepayers to say no. Why can't this city say no to this public outreach number? Why won't this city say no to everything that comes across its desk with respect to this project? This is why the people don't like this project, is because nobody that I know, who's saying no? Who is stopping just the ongoing flow of our money out of our checkbooks? I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. The other thing is this. Five years ago, when I was on the other side of the lectern, I came to council meeting after council meeting and said, "Please do not split this into three projects because it's going to increase the management dollars that we're going to have to spend to manage three projects instead of one." What I tried to communicate to the council unsuccessfully, obviously, has come to fruition. Three projects, they're now out of sync, costing more to manage than if it had been kept as one, as I advised. I made a call to some other consulting firms, because I've been in the industry a long time, to talk to them about the new rates that Corolo's charging. One of them said, "These are Beverly Hills rates. I wish I could get something anywhere close to these." So for Beverly Hills rates, I don't expect the management team to be thrown off guard and to come in with extra levels of effort to propose on one thing and then say, "It's going to take two years more and we're going to need millions more of your tax money." I don't expect that. Corolo has a good reputation. Everything that has happened should have been anticipated by them. They seem surprised when these things come down the pike. I'm surprised that they're surprised. What are we paying these high-dollar amounts for? I believe that this amendment reflects the fact that the city is over its head in managing this project or mismanaging it, and we need to stop. We need to stop and have either a closed session or some kind of discussion about this amendment.
So are you for the, either the agenda item or do you want to go off and revisit the whole project? Because we're not going to do that right now.
Okay, well, I'll wait for future agenda items and I'll bring up future agenda items at that time.
Pardon me, that would be fine, but could you just focus on the agenda item? That would be the appropriate thing to do right now. I'm just kindly asking that you do that.
Okay, let me look at my notes here, see what else I have. Okay, the last thing I want to say about this, and I've talked about this for a long time. This, this report from Corolo, and I respect your firm and I respect you, Mr. Casares, is very, very obtuse. It is the opposite of transparency. I have asked for a critical path method schedule for months. I still don't have one. The prior consultant provided everything I needed in terms of reporting. This makes extremely difficult to follow the dollars. And I spent four hours going through it and the, and the agenda, the original agreement, very difficult to follow. I'm completely against this. I think it's a mistake to pass this.
Councilmember Addis, you were wanting to weigh in. I'll go to you for comments on the agenda item. Thank you.
No, I didn't really want to weigh in. I just would like to stick to the agenda item.
Thanks.
And I just wanted to respectfully request that we could do that in the future. I understand it's a hot-button issue. I understand there's a lot of passion, but I also feel like it's more, very important and appropriate to stick to the agenda item that we're on.
Thank you. Councilmember McPherson, would you like to comment?
Sure, yeah. Well, I really do have to take issue with my fellow council member. I've been on this council now for three years and I have watched this project very closely. And I know there have been problems. There were early problems in the management of this project, both by the former city manager and the former project manager. But I am confident that we have hired the right firm to do this job. I have been impressed from the beginning with how knowledgeable and experienced they are. They've done this before. They've, they know how to do it. And I have been fortunate enough to actually sit on the WRF Subcommittee of the Council. And so I get frequent updates on the project. And I understand that the things that have happened to throw us off track are not the fault of Corolo. Some of it is, in fact, the people who have opposed this project, who managed to delay the Coastal Commission hearing on it. And so some of the delays is caused by people that have opposed the project actively. Other delays have been unforeseen. We did not know that the Vista property would be, Vista would purchase the property and then not allow us on. That is not something that Mr. Corolo, Mr. Casares caused or that Corolo had anything to do with. So I really think that we need to just move forward, as has been explained many times. We understand why this scope has changed. We understand the need. It's pretty clear. And if we don't need that much public communication with the public, they aren't going to bill us. But it was the council that specifically asked us to reach out and spend more time with the businesses on Quintana. So we're the ones who said, "Please do more. We want to make sure that we do everything possible to make it easy on the, on the business owners on Quintana." And that's exactly what they've done. So they've done exactly what we asked for. So I'm ready to move forward with this amendment. And I-
Thank you. Councilmember Addis?
Well, I would concur. I don't, I don't think we need to get in a battle over the value of Corolo. I think Corolo's shown their worth and I don't need to go into a big dissertation about it. And I'm ready to move forward.
Just capturing your comment. Thank you. I understand the concern about costs, you know, from not only the public, but also the council in general. I think we're called and mandated to continuously look at all opportunities to reduce costs for any project that we do, for any expenditures in the city, but one of this magnitude as well. And I know, being involved in the same Subcommittee that Councilmember McPherson is on, we meet every Monday for one and a half to two hours and go over the numerous details associated with this project. So not only do you have staff looking at a lot of minutia in detail, but you have your appointed Subcommittee doing the same thing. And I'm happy to be involved in that. Maybe that gives me a greater understanding of the project than the remainder of you. I'm going to take exception to Councilmember Heller's comment that the city manager's comments are unacceptable. I find that disrespectful. And his comment that the city manager's comments were outrageous, I find disrespectful as well. If you disagree with the city manager's comments, simply state that, but expletives like that are unnecessary in my mind. Two, I believe that the depth of knowledge of Corolo as program manager, especially having the services of Mr. Casares, have literally saved us millions of dollars. And I don't know there's any ideal project out there. And I know that there's a remnant that is against this project, that will be against probably literally any project that's proposed by the city, in my opinion. But nonetheless, the council majority is ready to move forward, will continue to listen. But just because we don't agree as a council majority doesn't mean we're not listening. And you need to note that. We do have differences of opinion and that's just the way it goes. With regard to the amendment, I do have concerns about public outreach. I will agree with the public comments that have been made. I think that there's an opportunity to trim that in the future. I will support the amendment because this is incremental approval. This is an absolute overall approval of $9 million or eight point, or whatever it is, $9.78 million. We look at this per amendment and now we'll be looking at it on a fiscal year basis. And so I would like to challenge our program manager and staff to really look at public outreach, scrutinize that significantly. I am concerned about the businesses on Quintana. I know a lot of that public outreach is meant to really assist and to mitigate as much as possible some of the concerns for those businesses. But if there is a way for us to lessen the burden of cost for that, I think it would be prudent of this council to do that. So I'm going to support the amendment as is with the caveat that you will reevaluate that, look very succinctly at those costs and hopefully in the future, bring back some more detail with regard to potential lesser cost options for that. I'm not going to go into further detail about the project in general. I will move that we approve the unauthorized public works director to sign Amendment Number Two, the attachment one to the existing agreement with Corolo Engineers dated April 11, 2018, for continued program management of the water reclamation facility project in an increased amount of $2,381,968. And that there be a critical review of the public outreach dollars done. And a future agenda item would be to bring back a report on ways to potentially reduce that. I'll stop there.
Second.
Okay. So motion by Council Mayor Heding and second by Councilmember McPherson for the staff report in addition, request to look at public outreach dollars. And with that, I'll open other discussion on the motion. Seeing none, roll call vote.
Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
No.
Motion carries 401.
Yep.
I apologize, 311.
Thank you. That moves us to Agenda Item Number Three, Approval of Memorandum of Agreement with San Luis Obispo County for Animal Shelter Project. Turning that over now to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Here to quickly discuss the memorandum of agreement with Slow County for Animal Shelter Project. As council is likely aware, at least a few of you were here here last time, we brought this forward. The city, County of Slow provides animal services to each of the cities in the unincorporated areas of the county. This regional approach provides a more efficient and more effective and collaborative approach to what can be a very challenging service across the county. A key component of the service provisions by the county is the shelter itself. The shelter, however, is in great need of replacement, given its age, condition, and really the inability to meet the current requirements and needs of a modern animal service operation. With city council approval, the city originally entered into an MOA with the county for a new animal shelter project in 2017, wherein the initial budget was up to $14.5 million and included cost sharing between the agencies. The cost sharing was developed based upon kind of the level of service that was brought into each city. Moro Bay is a pretty minimal user of the overall services compared to some of our neighboring communities, you know, roughly in the 3% to 5% range, just for background. In 2018, the county and all cities approved Amendment Number One to the MOA after three communities had considered early termination based on a number of issues. Thankfully, the, those cities worked with the county to address some of the concerns. And part of the negotiation was the county was, would absorb the first million dollars in the overall cost of the project and the remainder would be, you know, shared across that prorata basis. With the approval of that amendment, the project continued forward with a two-step design-build-selection process. Won't go into the gory details, but we did receive multiple submittals and the top three ranked firms are identified in the report. There was a very collaborative approach to reviewing that, using city managers and others to help review the RFPs and make sure that we're getting the best value for what was being submitted. Ultimately, the bid that was selected did come over well over the original amount that was established, you know, several years ago. And with the county absorbing the first million dollars, the total, it would be shared across the remainder is about $19 million. When we established our budget for fiscal year 1920 for our share of the debt payment, we were assuming a $22,225 a year debt payment. With the increase in the costs and then sharing those costs out equitably to the, to the cities and unincorporated areas, our new debt payment would be approximately $32,000 a year, a difference of about $10,000. So ultimately, what we're looking for here is approval of the memorandum of agreement with the county. We'll probably bring forward a budget adjustment at mid-year to account for the difference. Overall, we think the process is very collaborative. The county did an excellent job of kind of addressing some of the issues that the other cities had, but also including Moro Bay and others in the process and doing their best they can to manage the cost. This project will be a very nice improvement for our community. Instead of looking like prison, it will look like an animal shelter and something we can all be proud of. They've done an excellent job with managing what they have, but it is, is in definite need of replacement. We do have a few members of the county team here with us, John DiDatti and Jeff West, with the Public Works Department, to answer any questions you may have if I can't answer them.
Thank you. And thank you both for being here tonight. I'll open it up to council questions. If we have any questions for either Mr. Collins or our county representatives.
I do.
Yes.
So, Mr. Collins, so the $22,000 a year is going to $32,000 a year, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And for how many years is that obligation?
It's, I want to say 25 years. I have it in the staff report, so-
It's 25.
25 years, yeah.
And so we have this MOA. What is, if we were to, I mean, we're in a financial pinch, let's be frank. If we were to somehow say, "Hey, we're not in on this deal anymore. Can we get out of it?" What's our obligation?
Yeah, that would be, there would, there would probably be a significant penalty for exiting on, you know, because we're basically assuming that we're going to cover that portion of the debt and they're basing their financing on the cities providing that debt payment. It is a modest increase over, overall compared to, you know, what some of the other cities are paying. We believe we can make this payment moving forward. But yes, you are committing the city to that payment moving- But yes, you are committing the city to that payment moving forward, and it would be a pretty significant penalty to exit. But I'm sure the county, maybe you could answer that question in more detail.
Okay. And so, the new number is now not 19 million, it's, or is that the new number?
Yeah, sorry. So, the project total is at the, it's 20,000, $20,348,740. And the amount that's shared across the county and the cities is 19 million, because the county absorbed the first million.
So, the county is putting in just a million dollars?
And then they're going to pair, and then they're also going to pay their share of the services as well. So, it's the 1 million they sort of just took off the top and said, "We're going to cover that."
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Councilmember McPherson?
Yeah, I think the only question I would have is just some explanation of how the costs increased so dramatically in a short period of time. Somebody can answer that.
Yeah, I'll leave that to the county. They could probably answer that a little bit better.
Good evening. Jeff Worst, Design Division Manager, San Luis Obispo County Public Works Department. With this project, the original estimates were put together in, you know, I'd say 2015, 2016. The memorandum of agreement was put together based on estimates that our department had made from recently completed animal services-type projects that were similar in scope. But those projects were constructed during a downturn in the economy and a lot more favorable building climate. What we've noticed, especially in the last three, four years, there's been a significant escalation for building-type projects. And with the design bills, I'm sure you're aware, there's a requirement for the skilled and trained labor force, so that with our area and the amount of percentages for the trades that that would apply to, it's really competitive, and subcontractors are really busy, material suppliers are really busy. So, it's, we're basically seeing a real escalation of costs for the building-type projects.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Councilmember Addis?
I would just, I don't know if this is our staff or county staff, but how it's gone with other, with other cities so far, with having this, having it approved.
Jeff Worst again. I checked into that before I came here. So, last night, we were at the city of Paso Robles, and they passed it on their consent agenda. So, they were, I'd say they were like the top one or two besides the county. County's participation is about 42% of the overall debt service. And the city of Pismo approved it the 14th of October. So, next week, we have city of Arroy Grande in Atascadero, and then the week after that, Grover Beach and city of San Luis Obispo.
So, it sounds like we'd be in good company on a regional project?
Yes. And the other, I highlighted the staff report that the police chief for the city of Paso Robles had prepared for last night's consent agenda item. And he had indicated that if the city had chosen to not move forward with participation in the project, they would basically be required to build their own shelter and to do the responsibilities that are now proposed to be shared amongst all the cities. So, that was, you know, in their position, it was a lot better to, you know, to move forward with participation of this project.
Thank you.
And my only question was that question, which I know the answer to. What alternative do we have? Mr. Collins? If we don't approve this?
I, it's, we probably could not construct an animal shelter. You know, the, sorry, Paso and Atascadero did consider different options when this came around in 2017. You know, looked, I believe, looked up north, even to Monterey County potentially, and just found that the costs would be exorbitant, just in terms of distance to travel. And then constructing between the two of them was, you know, out of the question as well. Again, we believe we get good value beyond the animal services shelter. The county's taking a whole new approach to how they manage their operations, and including the cities at the table, versus kind of just telling us, "Here's what the budget is," and, you know, "Make do." It's far more collaborative and a kind of a different governance approach to how these services are rendered and how the budget's allocated, being very open to suggestions by the cities.
Thank you. No further questions with that. I'll open up public comment. Any members of the public wishing to come forward on this item, please do so now. Terry, welcome back again.
Oh, I'm back. I'm not here to object to the animal shelter, just to make you feel better about it. I do have an interesting perspective. I've unfortunately been here for so long and so involved in construction for so many years. I see a teachable moment here. The one reason, and it's not covered in the staff report, that there's a need for a new animal shelter is the previous animal shelter was very poorly constructed. It's a concrete building that was not done under proper geotechnical supervision, and so the building started literally tearing itself apart from day one. This is a teachable moment. We need to be very careful as we go to build a multi-multi-million-dollar concrete wharf facility that proper geotechnical work is done. And I've started it...
Want to comment on this item?
Yes, I am. I am commenting on this item. Yes. But there are teachable, the other teachable moment in this item is the fact that unexpected cost increases can occur, and you're looking at a 30% increase in your participation in this project. I hope that you will become aware that these things can happen and look forward to that in your other projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Public comments still open. Any members of the public wishing to come forward, please do so now. Seeing none, I will close public comment, and I'll entertain a motion. Oh, sorry.
Please, thank you.
Yes, Mimi, welcome back.
Hi. Thank you, city council. I don't know if you guys have been there, but, you know, they do a great job. God forbid if your animal got loose, though, and ended up there for a day, or two, or three. You'd want it to have the best, you know, place to be. And I totally suggest you guys do this. You know, go with your God, boys. You know it, the animals. And I want to give a shout out to Officer William Marvos, and I'd like to give a shout out to my daughter Lena Goldberg, and I'd like to give a shout out to the Big Bad and the Ugly Surf Invitational Contest here at Morro Rock.
Thank you, Mimi. Any other members of the public wish to come forward, please do so now. Looking, seeing none, close public comment, bring it back, entertain a motion.
I move that we review and approve the MOA with the county of San Luis Obispo for the city's share of the animal services project.
I second.
Motion by Councilmember McPherson to approve the staff recommendation, second by Councilmember Addis. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
No.
Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Motion carries 311.
Thank you. With that, I'll adjourn the meeting. Our next regular meeting is November the 12th, right here at 5:30 PM, 209 Surf Street, Morro Bay, California. Have a pleasant evening. Good evening.